Welcome to the Board Wrap-Up Show for Ponca City Public Schools. I'm your host, Shawn Anderson. This is our monthly visit with Superintendent Shelley Errett. And we're going to recap the May Board of Education meeting with Superintendent Eric. Shelley, thank you for being with us. And first off, normally we start with the Board of Education Awards, but there were some very important announcements and recognitions for retirees. And there were plenty of them, just wait until a year, how many years cumulatively that we have retiring from the school district? It's pretty impressive. And that was a very special time during the main meeting.
Yes, Shawn, we did have 26 employees retiring this at the end of this school year. And these are made up of administrators, certified teachers and support, educational support employees. And our certified employees have to be members of Oklahoma Teacher Retirement. And a teacher's retirement is based on their three highest years of salary. And if you'll remember, the historic teacher pay raise in Oklahoma was exactly three years ago. When we knew we were going to hang on to some of our teachers for at least three years. I tell you what, they have devoted their lives to the students of Ponca City Public Schools. Well deserved, but boy, when, when all that experience walks out the door, it makes it hard. Because they are excellent, excellent staff members. So I would like to recognize these people. We had three administrators who are retiring at the end of the year. Barbara Cusick, Secondary Curriculum Director, 44 years of service to PCPS. Rhonda Merrifield, our principal at Roosevelt, has 20 years of service to Ponca City Schools. Dawn Mills, Assistant Principal at Lincoln, 28 years of service, all with PCPS. So those were our administrators. We had 11 teachers, Denise Baldwin, fifth grade teacher at Garfield, 31 and a half years. Janice Branstad, our pre-K teacher at Washington Pre-K, 19 and a half years, all with PCPS. Michael Farmer is our choir teacher at West Middle School. He's been an educator in Texas for 32 years and he's been with us the last five years. And I think he's moving on to Missouri and going to teach there for a while. So lifelong dedicated educator. We also had Jennifer Fenton, 15 years, English teacher at East Middle School. Rob Frye, he is, he taught leadership at West Middle School, longtime coach in the district, assistant A.D., 21 years of service with PCPS. Julie Logan, second grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary, 31 years with Ponca City Schools. Dolores Schultz, teacher at East Middle School, she teaches special services. She's been with the district for 37 years. We had two speech pathologists retire. Janetta Swanson, 18 years with PCPS, and Nancy Van Zant, seven and a half years with PCPS. We also had Paula White, a math teacher at Pohai, retire, 32 years of service. And Paula is actually going to sit out for 60 days and then come back and teach point six of the time, little over, little more than half time at a capped salary, which, which is allowable by law. We had 12 educational support employees and they play integral roles in educating and enhancing the lives of our student. Ron Allen, custodian at Lincoln Elementary, nine years of service. Sharon Chamberlain, a pre-kindergarten T.A., 27 years with PCPS. Terry Frye has driven a bus for us for 21 years. Liz Glaser actually retired in December. She has been in child nutrition for 33 years. Also in child nutrition, Mary Jo Haynes retired with 15 years of service. And another child nutrition program worker, Betty Hill, retired with 10 years of service. Kristy Jennings drove a bus for 24 years for PCPS. Julie Ray was our financial secretary at Pohai for nine years. Doris Rowe, another CMP employee, 23 years of service. Terry Schultz has driven a bus for us for 30 years. And Paula Snead, custodian for 16 years. And then finally Carla Webb, she worked in the district business office as activity clerk, 23 years of service. So total cumulative service to schoolchildren, 621 years. But what's impressive, out of these 621 years, 524 have been serving the students of Ponca City Public Schools. That's commitment, loyalty, dedication. These people have devoted their lives to enhancing the education of the students of Ponca City. And it's bittersweet. We always hate to lose our retirees. And I'm telling you, education is a challenge, but it's always worth the reward. But I wish them all well. And I know they're looking forward to some rest and relaxation and maybe some vacations at different pace in life in the education world. Let's start to finish as fast as you can go all day long. So we wish them the best of luck and certainly appreciate their service. So.
Yeah, for sure. The Board of Education Awards every month. It's a regular part of the Board of Education meeting. And who did the awards go to this month?
Okay, so the Certified Employee of the Month, it went to Lindsay Wilburn. She is a special services teacher at Woodlands Elementary. And she's also a school nurse, certified school nurse. So she really helped out and stepped up, especially during this year pandemic. We also had an additional Certified Employee of the Month. It was a surprise award. This went to Curtis Leighton, our Executive Director of HR. And as you know, Curtis is going to Glenpool as the superintendent. But we kind of surprised him because HR is in charge of these awards for his dedication to helping us with COVID issues. I am telling you, and we've talked about this before, COVID knows no timeline, knows no holidays, knows no weekends. So it has been round the clock. So we surprised him with that award and appreciate his service. And we'll certainly miss him. The Friend of Education was Philip 66. You know, they were one of our pandemic partners, our vaccination partners. So we have recognized White Eagle Health Center, K County Health Department, and Philip 66. I got a call from Bart Snyder at P66 and their vaccination team. And they volunteered to vaccinate all of our teachers who hadn't had it yet. So, and when we went out and did the picture, they're going to help us with any boosters that we may have or any new teachers. So I am so thankful for our vaccination partners. It certainly our teachers who wanted to be vaccinated were vaccinated before the teacher phase even opened up, at least with the first dose. So.
For sure. Wow. Wonderful. Board of Education Awards, very well deserved.
I missed one person. Our support employee went to Ms. Wanda Morgan. She is a Title I Teacher Assistant at Liberty Elementary. And she's been with the district a really long time. She is a tireless, dedicated worker.
Very good. The Board of Education meeting moved right along into the superintendent's report and fairly lengthy report. It covered a lot of things, legislation, staffing issues, of course, as we approach the end of the school year here, and the COVID updates.
Okay, I'll just give you a brief update. Always when the legislature is in session, I do a legislative update on common education bills or laws. And we talked about Senate Bill 229, which establishes a common school building fund, equalization fund for schools. If you'll remember, the State Board of Education in March this year actually resolved a lawsuit which divvied up all public schools, local and state allocated revenues to extend to charter schools and virtual charter schools. And that's a, that's a lot of money for brick and mortar schools to leave the district. That's our building fund money, our GPT, our motor vehicle, our REA, our county four mil. So several schools stepped up and joined together to file a lawsuit to stop that change from occurring July 1. So it had to be pretty quick because July 1 is just a couple of months away. And there were 187 districts who joined in that lawsuit, representing over 400,000 public school children. And Ponca City Public Schools did join that lawsuit. And that will actually be presented, oral arguments will be presented to the court on June 2. And the basic premise of the lawsuit is the legislature is the only one who can decide how public funds are divvied up among public schools. So Senate Bill 229, though, allows for an equalization of building fund monies. And that was a hard pill for brick and mortar schools to swallow. How, how can virtual schools receive a portion of our building fund monies? We barely have enough building funds to take care of the many issues that occur with 4,500 students using them daily. So this would actually spread building funds, it would equalize building funds. And those districts that don't have high ad valorem or at the average would then be brought to the average. And then money would be spread to charter schools, but not virtual charter schools. We are above the state average in our building fund allocation, but we would be held harmless with Senate Bill 229. And I'm communicating with our Senator Bill Coleman, and he actually texted me first. And he said, Shelley, I'm a yes on 229 because we text often, but it's, it's, it got held over. So that's where we are with Senate Bill 229. Little, there were a few bills that affected school boards. House Bill 2862 raises the thresholds for competitive bidding requirements from 50,000 to 100,000, which will be helpful. That's been signed into law and will go into effect on November 1. And then there was a bill that authorizes support employees to receive pay for any time off due to a health official ordering closure of school. That was an issue for us back in the mandated closure. You know, support employees are hourly employees. So we, we had to, the governor had to sign an executive order for us to pay that, them. But now there's some legislation in pass, in place, should that happen again. It goes into effect July 1. And I, for one, will say, I hope we never face that again. We did have one testing mandate removed. House Bill 1715 repeals the Reading Proficiency Act or the requirement that eighth graders pass the English Language Arts State Assessment in order to obtain their driver's license. So that was repealed. It was signed into law on April 26 and was effective on April 26. With the pandemic and the closure, it was hard to maintain that instruction and even hard to get our students tested. So that mandate has been taken off the table. We did discuss some bills addressing the teacher shortage. Senate Bill 1796 allows a teacher candidate to not take the Oklahoma subject area proficiency test if they have an advanced degree in a closely related subject. So if we have a teacher that has a, if we have a potential teacher who has a degree in chemistry, but not education, they wouldn't have to take the chemistry OSAT, Subject Area Tests, to gain certification in Oklahoma. Senate Bill 267 is a big one. We talked about this a little bit, something similar to it. Allowed retired teachers who have received benefits, OTRS benefits, for at least one year and who have not been employed by any public school district, they can't have been paid a day, not even to substitute, to come back at full salary after one year. Currently, that law is three years. And, and when we talked about losing our, our experienced teachers to retirement today, that will certainly help us. We have a lot of retired teachers who have returned to work for us. And, and that will help us if they want to sit out. At this point, it seems like a lot of our teachers sit out for 60 days and then come back at a capped salary. And that cap salary is anywhere from 18 to $30,000. Plus, they, they, they draw their teacher retirement. So that compensates for their full salary. And in fact, it works out to be a little bit more. In one of my legislative updates this last week, I think there's some discussion about raising that cap salary, which will certainly be beneficial, beneficial. Because I am telling you, Shawn, the teacher shortage in Oklahoma is real. Currently, there are 700 open teaching positions in all of our schools. And I promise you, there are not that many candidates. So I gave a staffing report and I'm not going to name all the unfilled positions. I'll, I'll give you the total. As of Monday, and this has changed, mind you, because we've had some hires and some resignations since last Monday. We had 21 certified openings, positions for teachers. So we are vying for 21 of these teachers among those 700 openings. We do have three teachers banked. That means we have hired them, but we haven't placed them at a side. It just depends on the needs. Sometimes if it's a coach, a high school coach, we wait for an opening to come open at the high school. Or if it's a junior high coach, we wait for an opening to come up, open at the junior high. We have three positions banked. So as of Monday, we had 21 new hires, but 21 openings. So we will have a busy summer. I will assure you.
For sure. COVID updates.
Yeah, I gave a COVID update. And we've talked about this on the morning show. Our county risk levels are the lowest they've ever been. On Monday, they were at 2.6. And then a new risk level has come out since our board meeting and we're at 2.3. So those are really low numbers. However, I always give a report for the first of each month, what our COVID totals look like. The first week in April, we had zero positives and only 14 family close contacts. Now, the first week in May, we had three positives, which resulted in three contact tracing investigations. And we don't want that because our kids are then quarantined for up to 10 days unless they test negative after day five. They can return on day eight. But in May, we had three positives with 79, I'm sorry, 73 students affected. So a lot of those students, the first week in May, were scheduled to return from their quarantine the day after the board meeting, Tuesday, May 11. So I also made a proposal to the board to adopt the governor's close contact quarantine guidelines. And if you'll remember, in January, the governor came out with some guidelines that were, that were comparable to essential worker guidelines, CDC quarantine guidelines, to allow our students to stay in class. At that point, the policy was not mandatory for schools. And there were very few schools that decided to adopt that policy. Our teachers hadn't been vaccinated. Our county risk levels in January in K County were over 100. We just weren't ready to take that risk. So we decided to continue with our own guidelines. But with risk levels down and at the time of the board meeting, we only had 10 days of school left. And if we quarantined a student at that point, they would be gone for the remainder of the year. So we decided, I made that proposal. So basically, what the proposal said was that students or staff in a classroom-like setting required to mask will not have to quarantine. Now, these are settings that are supervised, where masks are required. Classroom-like settings, however, do not extend to strenuous activities like sports where they don't wear masks. So potentially, kids could get quarantined from an activity if they're not masked up. So we've recommended to our coaches, keep those juniors and seniors up in the bleachers and keep them masked. We don't want them to miss graduation or prom, which are coming up. That, that, that's a hard pill to swallow. So another thing that is limited on this close contact quarantine proposal of the governor, if it's a household contact, they still have to quarantine. And what our data has shown this entire year, if someone living in the house has COVID, it spreads in the home. So, and then of course, a positive case will still require a 10-day isolation. There's just no way to get around that. So the validation is our risk levels are lower than they've been this entire school year for the county. Since March 1, we have one, had had one close contact become a case. And that was an outside close contact. And we have no evidence that COVID is spreading in our classrooms while our students are masked. And this allows us a little bit of flexibility to help our students cross the finish line.
Fantastic. Wow. That's, you know, that's good news. After this last year, that's, we'll take it, right?
We will take it. The board did approve that and we will take it. And we are certainly looking to forward to hopefully some more normalcy next year. Now, I spoke with the epidemiologist at the State Department of Health and the 12 to 15-year-old stage sheet for vaccination. Pfizer's been approved for 12 to 15-year-olds. That was supposed to open in June. It actually opened today in Oklahoma City. So, so once we get notified by the Oklahoma State Department of Health, we'll get that information out. Be good for kids, you know, who are visiting, visiting grandparents, traveling on vacation during the summer. And then, once someone is fully vaccinated, they are exempt from close contact quarantine. Currently, our students 16 to 18 years old can be vaccinated. We have about 60 16 to 18-year-olds who are fully vaccinated. So they will be exempt from close contact quarantine.
Nice, nice. Very good. Well, the May Board of Education meeting, as you can tell by this board wrap-up show, was a very busy one. And every month, there are contracts that must be approved. And there were some of these. What are we talking about?
Oh, boy. And we had a lot because we're really near the end of our fiscal year. It ends on June 30. So we are purchasing our software, contracting with Speech Pass, our security. One thing that we will continue with is Ponca City Virtual Academy. That door has been opened. We offered it to our students this year. And we had 604 at the beginning of the school year when the pandemic, we really didn't know a lot about that. Right now, you know, we allowed kids to come back to in-person instruction. Because as a longtime educator, I personally believe that's best. However, we have some students who have excelled in PCVA. So we are going to continue to offer PCVA, but a minimal number. And we will offer through grades K through 12 again, probably closer to more like 125 or 150. And if students opt for PCVA, they can still be a part of our activities because they are still a Ponca City Public School student. So it's basically like our own virtual charter school, but they can be involved in our activities. So hey, one thing this pandemic has done has changed the landscape of education. So I will imagine that we will always offer Virtual Academy, just to a lesser degree, if we're not in a pandemic.
Right, right.
A lot of that software, oh, here's, here's a big one. We, our board approved a quote with meteor education for air and surface pathogen reduction units and sanitizing products. And part of our CARES money has to be spent on preparing, preventing and responding to COVID. So a certain amount has to be spent on preventing the spread of COVID. And we did a lot of research on these devices. They were actually, were developed by NASA. And they pull out any kind of issues in the air, including COVID, mold, strep, flu. So each teacher will have a Casper, it's what it's called, is a Casper device in their classroom. So even if COVID is minimal, when we start back to school, we should see a difference with flu and strep and that kind of thing, too. So we actually, those have been ordered and they are on their way in. And we'll keep getting those distributed this summer. Some other things that we did, just our Reading Plus, our Renaissance software, basic educational programs that we use throughout the year. So.
Very good. Wow. I love those new devices that are going to be in those.
Me, too. They're amazing. We have one here at the board and we put it in, in the boardroom. And this company also makes some sanitizing spray and some hand sanitizer. And we purchased it, you know, the research behind regular hand sanitizer, it just dissipates in a matter of minutes. And our kids were using sanitizer like crazy. We purchased this hand sanitizer and it's almost like a liquid Band-Aid and it lasts for eight hours on your hands. So.
Wow.
And then, and then a spray that we can spray down large areas like our gyms, our weight training facility, cafeterias, that kind of thing. So super excited about that.
Well, at a certain point, the Board of Education meeting went into executive session. And tell us, you can't tell us.
But we, we can talk about certain issues. We can talk about personnel issues. We can talk about legal issues, real property issues. So we discussed that.
What, what are the big personnel issues was Mary Ladd, after how many years? 30?
36.
Wow. Retiring and replacement, the one and only Kristy Hayes coming in to, to fill her shoes. And that is quite the job. Tell us a little bit about that, please.
Okay, let me tell you a little bit about that. With Mary, when Mary, Mary already retired once. And since I've been superintendent, she's worked remotely. And I'm telling you, with such a large district, we have a lot of press that comes out. And Mary and I, Mary could do it remotely because she has done it for so long. And she and I worked together really well. And then, then there were some health issues with Mary's husband Jim. And she came in to visit with me and she said she was going to retire for good. And, and she hated it. It's been so hard on her because she, PCPS has just been part of her life forever. And she loves our district, but, but she felt like she had to care for Jim. And that was absolutely the right thing to do. And I said, okay, so you're retiring at the end of the school year. No effective April 30. And I just kind of, kind of panicked there for a minute because busy, busy time. And, and, and we have made it. So everybody, I thank them for having mercy with us. We've put out lots of press releases, all hours of the night. I've been working on that. Barbara Nalan, Chris Adams, Rebecca Higgins, Betty Johnson, Kathy Conrad, Brenda Story. It has taken a village, but we've done that for the last two weeks. So thank you for being patient with us. We, we don't have the expertise that Mary has, but we hired Kristy. And Kristy actually is working a few hours a day. And yesterday, before she starts full-time, which is just in a few days, she was in yesterday. And I kind of kept watching for, well, the next thing I knew, I got an email that she was waiting on some quotes from me. And I replied back, I said, are you in the office? And she said, yes. So she literally came in the office, onboarded, hit the ground running, pushed out press releases yesterday. And I'm telling you, it was like a weight off my shoulders. So we are super excited about having Kristy. She will be in the office all day, every day. And not only will she do our press releases, but she will be at those sites, meeting our staff and our students and marketing our district. So we've had some great conversations about some great ideas. So she has joined our team and that was board approved.
That is fantastic. And of course, we're approaching the end of the school year. We're actually recording this on a Thursday. Weekend is prom. That's a big deal. Graduation next week. And things are a little different. I mean, adjustments have been made, but that's just really been the, you know, the, the normal for the last year is changing at a moment's notice and adapting and finding ways to make things work. And that's certainly the case with these two big events coming up. And that's certainly the case with these two big events coming up.
Yes, we had to think outside of the box, especially with grand march and prom. We couldn't go to the Marla Mansion, which is our normal venue, because there were limitations on crowd capacity. And the limitations were were way lower than the number of students we had. And we certainly didn't want to do a lottery for prom. So we're going to do the grand march at Solon Stadium. And each each student got two vouchers. But if we are outside at Solon Stadium, we are going to have eleven hundred additional tickets for free. For the first come, first served. Plus, it's going to be live streamed by Speak Now Production, three cameras, three different angles. It's going to be high-quality, professional. Um so if people want to stay home and watch, that's great too. Then the prom is going to be in Robson Fieldhouse. And we've got some tall standing tables and elegant lights. And and we're going to decorate it all up. Um we're gonna have a DJ and uh lots of fun things to do. Little photo booth, so looking forward to a good time. I am praying for no rain, at least through the grand march. If it's a, if inclement weather, we will go into Robson. And then not as many people can come in. But we'll still let an additional six hundred and fifty, I believe, come in, in addition to the student vouchers. Graduation, um I'm praying it's outside at Solon's. Each student has six vouchers. And then we'll allow uh up to three or four hundred more people to come in. It will be live streams. Now, if graduation is rained out, we will go to Robson. Um so we won't be able to have as many people in Robson. So we're, we're hoping for the best. Boy, if the weather was like today, that would be fabulous. It's beautiful outside today. So. And we mustn't forget about Baccolà. That is the Thursday, the twentieth, before uh graduation. It is going to be held at First Baptist Church. So we appreciate our community partners working with us. Everybody has helped us and supported us. It it's been a challenging and trying year for everyone, for students, for staff, for families. But you know what? There have been some silver linings that have come out of this. We're stronger together. We know we're adaptable. We know we're flexible. We know we can think outside the box and we made it work the best we could. So it's been perfectly imperfect. But hey, I'm I'm just glad our kids were in school. It was, it was really hard on us emotionally. When we were in mandated closure uh that last quarter of last year. So it's been a challenge. But any, any day we saw our kids, we were blessed.
Yeah, for sure. Shelley Arret, Superintendent of Ponca City Public Schools, thank you so much uh for that update, the Board of Education meeting. Every month, of course, you can watch the Board of Education meeting on uh on your cable access education channel. And uh and so it's always there. And uh you can watch the board wrap up every month. We present it right here for Ponca City Public Schools. Thank you for watching for Ponca City Public Schools. I'm your host, Sean Anderson. Until next time.